All right.
Good evening. It is eight thirty-four, and I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the common council for July sixth, two thousand twenty-three. If you'll please rise and join me in pledging allegiance to our nation's flag. Mrs. Dixon, if you please call the roll.
Mr. Burnett.
President.
Mr. Camacho. Mr. Goldstein.
Here.
Ms. Najelski-Eichner.
Present.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Ayers. Mr. Revlos.
Here.
Mr. Caides. Ms. McMur. Ms. Alterman. Mr. Meek. Ms. Shanahan. Mr. Frayer.
Here.
One, two, three, four, five, six. We have six common council members present.
Thank you. Next item we would open is the public participation. Is there anybody waiting to comment to the council?
If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand electronically now, and I will unmute you. We just have one person, but they do not have their hand raised. Nicole.
Okay, and.
And, Mr. Mayor, can we just, for the record, take a roll call of the charter revision members?
If you would do that, yes, please.
Yeah, okay, so Patsy Bresch, obviously here. Carl Dickens.
Here.
Tyler. Fairthing, Tyler.
I am here, best.
Yeah, yes, and I believe that's it for us this evening.
Okay, let the record show that we, oh, and Mr. Camacho has just joined. And also let the record show that Mr. Mednick will be presenting this evening. So, Mr. Burnett, I'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moving on to item four on the special meeting agenda, which is to review Articles nine to completion, to the end of the draft report of the Charter Revision Commission. And this will complete, this will be the third workshop of the common council on the charter revision recommendations from the commission. And at this time, I will turn it over to Attorney Stephen Mednick to lead us in the workshop discussion of the remaining articles. Ms. Smith.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, Mayor, members of the council and our friends of the Charter Commission. Can everybody see on the screen the the document? Article nine, good. So let me explain what I've done here. Two of your colleagues, Nora and Councilmember McMur did provide some comments, and and so this document will show some of the edit changes that were made. I want, I want to say that I am very grateful to the councilwoman, the council member, Nora, for the work that she has done well beyond the call of duty. Making sure that I try to remember my grammatical weaknesses, and she's put me to shame, and and we've cleaned up the document quite a bit in that regard, and among other catches that were were made in this process. And then there are some substantive questions, so I will stop to try to address those as we get to them. Or have the council members raise it. As I say, Councilmember McMur is not here, but I will raise her questions as we get to them. So this is the section on education. The, there's really no substantive change that we've made in this section. We deal with the composition of the board. What you'll see is, instead of a, you know, a breakdown that we have in the current charter, where everything's kind of put into like a wall of words, we do have a breakdown of the various provisions that are involved here. Councilmember McMur raised a question in subparagraph six of of nine dash one A about the term, using the term election of superintendent. And should we be talking about the hiring of the superintendent? And my comment is that election is the statutory word. They, they basically by statute say that the Board of Education shall elect a superintendent, and so that's a very simple response. There really isn't much else to say in that regard. I believe that somebody had raised the issue. Let me just see here, hold on. The, the question in the next paragraph, you're going to see a change, a little bit of a change. At the end of six, there was language that talked that basically authorized the superintendent of schools to employ various folks in the, in the support of the system. And the assistants, principals, teachers, et cetera. That language was attached to the selection or election of the school superintendent. One of the council members recommended that we merge it with the next sentence, the next paragraph, which dealt with other appointments. And we will, you know, so it made sense to do so. The only reason I kept it with the other one is that it was attached to it in the current charter. Councilmember McMur raised the question, and I don't have an answer for this one. Is the, you know, so we know what hiring a principal means, or hiring the various folks that work in the system. The, the original sentence, this one right here, which is which talks about the may, the board may make such appointments before any appropriation has been made to cover the salaries of the persons appointed. And eight dash two D two shall not apply to such obligations. And so the councilman raised the question, councilmember raised the question. What does this mean? What does this do? Do we have any examples? And the answer is, I do not have any examples. And so I would ask members of the council, ask the mayor. Do we know whether this provision, it's a pretty interesting provision? I think we might have talked about it. We didn't change anything at the Charter Commission level because you want to be careful about picking a fight with the Board of Education. I'm not sure this is sensible language, maybe something you look a couple of years, but it seems pretty interesting that that language exists. I don't know whether anybody in the government has had any experience with that language.
I, I think it could apply if, because at a lot of the board meetings, they'll hire different administrators, they'll hire teachers in various positions, and it always comes before a vote of the Board of Education. So I don't know if that would apply. It looks like they may make appointments before any appropriation, so they can make the appointment even before there's been a salary adjustment or money allocated for those positions. I mean, that's what I think it could be.
So they can hire in this fiscal year to start on July one, when the funds would be available?
Well, it looks like before any appropriation has been made. So I would think that, let's say that they want to hire an assistant superintendent in charge of curriculum. The person's name and resume would be put before the board, and they would vote at it at a meeting, vote on it at a meeting. And they would also include in that vote the salary that that person would be paid. So I, I think that's probably what that's referring to.
Okay.
I don't know if anybody else has a different interpretation.
I, I just want to comment that we did spend quite a bit of time talking about this number seven, because it it's very confusing, and we weren't sure. So we decided to, as Steve said, we decided to leave it. And, and see if anybody else had any additional information on that.
Well, I do sit in on a lot of the board meetings, and I do see on the agenda various appointments from time to time. And again, they talk about the salary, and obviously they have their budget, so even if they appoint somebody, let's say they do appoint a deputy superintendent, superintendent in charge of curriculum. That still has to come out of their allocation that we gave them for that fiscal year. So, so I don't know before any appropriation has been made, so I imagine they have to adjust their line items or their salary, or the, I'm sorry, or their budget.
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, it just kind of confirms my, my thought, and I think the thought of the commission, that we would just leave it in place. If it hasn't done any harm, it's something we could look at, you could look at within the next two years when you do the other charter. It just does not make sense to, we were talking about beer, you don't want to wake up a sleeping bear. And we just don't know what the implications are by, if we were to eliminate this language, even if we don't fully understand it. Madam Chair, Patsy, do you have your hand up, or is that?
No, I didn't take it down.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right. Councilmember Najelski-Eichner had a question regarding, get to the next sentence, just talks about the duties of the board. Nothing surprising here, nothing unique. But and I made some, I made some changes based on some questions that were raised, some tense issues and what, whatnot. Councilmember Najelski-Eichner had a question in the last sentence that the board is further authorized to make its bylaws, define the term duties of its officers and committees, and prescribe rules and regulations for discipline in the public schools. I, I think that her point was can't they do this under the statutes? And the answer is, yes, they can. It's a provision that has been in the charter, and I think we just made a judgment call that without consulting with them, without discussing it with them, we would not, we would not try to, you know, raise any issues that might be, have unintended consequences. So again, my, my thought is that when we look at this two years from now, in the next two years, we might want to go to the Board of Ed and talk to them about, about their, their chapter and their article, and see what reforms and revisions we might be able to make in that regard. Now, things like board reports, which is the next, I'm sorry, did I cover your issue? Nora?
Yeah, no, absolutely. That's fine. I rules and regulations in, for the public schools, which would be fine, that just having it limited to discipline seemed odd, but if that's the current language, that's not mess.
Well, we can say discipline in other matters. I don't, you know, but I, I, again, you know, with, with the exception of adding the word further and changing some of the ways we approach, I, I, we, the, the chair, Patsy will tell you that on a couple of minor issues, we had a major brouhaha, so we just want to try to go slow unless we need to do otherwise.
No, makes sense.
Yep, and the next issue is one of the, well, the next issue is board reports. This is a provision that you want to make, make sure you keep in your charter as the reporting requirements. The reporting requirements is a new provision, I believe. Yes, it is. And this caused a major brouhaha. We were trying to, and we worked it out. Spent a lot of time talking to their council. And the idea here for the members of the council was that we want to make sure that, and, and, and we want to make sure that the council and the Board of Estimate and Taxation and the mayor gets on a quarterly basis a report on all their agreements, memoranda. Made a slight change at the request of a couple of the council members, and if any council members object to any of these minor changes, please raise them. I thought that they were sufficiently Scrivener-type things that I would make those changes. I did not change anything substantively. And so, but if you do think you like the other language, please raise your hands and let us know that you, you think we should, we should restore it to where it is. The idea here was to try to get a real understanding of what kind of contracts they're entering, and not because you're going to try to stop them, or you're prying, but you want to make sure that they're not entering multi-year agreements under the cover of option agreements of other provisions for extensions that if they're putting out a contract with an extension agreement or an option agreement, it is a multi-year agreement. And multi-year agreements need to be approved by the legislative body. So the objective here is to get regular reporting from the Board of Ed so that you can take a look, and we, I specifically refer to extensions, options, renewals, all those types of issues to make sure that they understand, and they do understand, that that they have to come to you for multi-year agreements. So that's the purpose of that section. Councilmember McMur. Or let's go back to eight dash three, nine dash three. She raised two points on this page. And I hope you don't mind this. I just wanted to speak for her since she did, was kind enough to send her comments in. She wanted to know whether nine dash three happens now. And I think I said the provision was new, the provision is new, so it does not happen now. So that's a new reporting requirement. And, and so is for nine dash four as well. She asked in nine dash four whether this is new, and the answer is yes, and how, how we would enforce this, this provision. Well, I think that you have three bodies that are going to be getting these reports, whichever body is most interested in getting those reports would probably know if the reports are not coming in, or be informed that the reports are not coming in, and simply ask the Board of Education to provide the report. Do you have subpoena authority? Can you lock them into the basement of City Hall until they until they give you the reports? You'll have to decide how to do that. You probably can do an ordinance requiring the department head to do it, and you can probably establish some kind of a penalty that you're entitled to do under state law. But the idea is that you're hoping with the cooperation clauses in the charter that the Board of Ed would provide and support this provision. And the fact is, they did agree to the language when we, when we recommended. So I see a couple of hands, Councilmember Frayer and Chair Bresch.
Thank you. Maybe I'm just misunderstanding this, but you just said that this nine dash three is, is changed, it's new?
I believe it's new.
Because that seems like the process that we would follow. I've been on the Board of Estimate Taxation for a number of years, and that seems to be the same process we've always followed.
I'll take a look at that.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll take a look at the annotation of that, Councilmember, to make sure that that is correct. Because I thought it was an older provision as well. Nine dash four is new, but I will check out the codification, the code on nine dash three to make sure that that is that it's properly it's properly annotated.
And nine dash three, I think the only thing that is new is the last sentence, I believe. They don't report monthly to the mayor chief financial officer. I mean, the chief financial officer can gain access to their expenditures and allocations, but I don't think that they report on a monthly basis. Jim, do you recall that?
Yeah, I think it's, it's, in, in the CFO provides detailed information of what the actual versus the budget is on a regular monthly basis. So we see that, whether people actually look at it and comment on it is maybe something else. I mean.
Yeah, he does that for the entire city, actually.
Yeah, and the Board of Ed is in there, and it does break it down into major categories. I mean, you don't get a lot of visibility out of it, but it's, it's there.
I, I wanted to just add that these two sections really took up most of the discussion with members of the Board of Education when we had them in for one of our meetings. And I, my recollection is the timing was not the same, that their, their submission is wasn't at the same time as the rest of the departments. We spent a lot of time talking about that. But then on nine four, that was a major compromise, and their position was with regard to reporting is that the mayor sits on the board and has access to all the information that the board members, and therefore that complied with their need to do a report to the mayor. So that was the position that they took.
They took the position that the mayor would provide us with all the contracts, and we ultimately persuaded them that they should.
I think they're taking some liberties with that, but that's, yeah.
But we, we, we didn't agree. The commission did not agree with that.
Right.
Councilmember Goldstein.
Yeah, I mean, I think the mayor is more or less alluding to, I think, what might be an issue here, which is it's not exactly clear what the report is supposed to say, other than quote a comparison of actual and estimated expenditures. But just by pointing and saying, oh, you can go, you know, to Munis or whatever, or the database and pull the data, is not would not constitute a report, as I read this language. I just want to make sure that we're, everyone is very clear on what a report actually looks like, because I'm wondering if there are going to be fights on what's considered a report.
Are we talking on nine dash four?
Nine three.
Nine three.
I, I, excuse me, I, I don't understand what your concern is there. What, what is a report?
It says in nine three that the Board is further required to report monthly to mayor a comparison of actual and estimated expenditures. And my concern was if they take the position that the mayor has access to all the information that's tantamount to a report, and therefore they don't actually have to provide an actual report, that that could ensue a, a conflict that would be nice to avoid. Perhaps I'm over reading this, but I'm, that was my initial concern with this language.
Well, my experience on the Board of Estimate Taxation is that there is no specific reports from any departments saying this is what my budget is this past month. This is what my actual is. This is an analysis of the variance. None of them do that. It's all in the munis system. And we get the same thing, whether it be the Police Department, Fire Department, or the Board of Ed. It's all exactly the same report. It's a, it's a monthly report that comes out that shows you the budget, revisions to the budget, actual year-to-date, and what they, what the variances. And if you want to ask a question about why do you have this significant variance? That was our prerogative at Board of Estimate Taxation meetings every, every month. I don't know what else you would need, to be honest with you.
If I may. I'm not sure that it was a report that they prepared. I think it's a report that the Finance Department prepared, based on what's come in and what's outstanding, you know, with the with the Controller's Office, like basically, it wasn't something that we specifically received from the departments. It was something that was put together by finance, based on the information that they had, the bills that they had to pay and things like that. I think this, I think this requires the Board of Ed to be pro, to be proactive in that regard, as opposed to just have the Finance Department rely on the information that it has, just in the ordinary course.
I, I don't mean to belabor the point, but it, you, you, it would be the same thing. The Board of Ed is no different than any other department, and that's yes, you know, if, if you're, if you're not going to take the, the numbers out of Munis, which is the, the city's records, then what's the point of having a report? So I mean, it's, you, you're looking at the data, you know.
I agree. Yeah, I agree.
I don't. I don't see it. Okay.
So am I hearing, not to formulate a proposal for anybody, my hearing a question as to whether or not that last sentence, which I highlighted is necessary? Is that what Councilmember Frayer is suggesting?
Yeah. I mean, it sounds like, to me, it doesn't seem necessary. Because you know, what does it really mean? The, a lot of these I think we learned, I, I think on BET, it became, it became evident that a lot of expenditures occurred toward the very end of the fiscal cycle. And a lot of things came in after the, you know, were incurred, but not yet due till after the, you know, cycle had completed. So, so there's really no value in doing a month-to-month thing, because it's not as if the the stream of expenses are consistent in any way from month to month.
Well, I mean, did, did I, I think you're absolutely right. And it's, it's, it's the information that's out there, that they're giving, we, we have access. You know, the Board of Estimate has access, the mayor has access, the council has access to the raw data. It's in a format, and anybody can look at it, and if they've got a question on it. I mean, basically, you're saying you're, if you want to get a special, if this highlighted sentence is to get a more definitive report from the Board of Estimate, then it should be, or from the Board of Education, it should be for all, all departments. But it's, it's, it, it's then going to be additional work for them where the information is already available. That's, I think that was my first question. I said, what is it that they don't have, that we don't get now that we are going to get? We're not going to get anything different. I mean, that's what it is. This is what the actual expenses were. This is what the estimated were. Here's the difference. If you got a question about it, and to Ed's point, it happens every time that if there's a huge under or over, the answer for that particular month is probably that it's a timing issue, that we didn't get paid something the previous month, but we paid it this month. So you see more this month than did last month, and so on and so forth. So when you get to the end of the year, it really becomes a lot more meaningful. But I, I, I think it's kind of superfluous right now, because.
I just marked it.
Mr. Mednick?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Thank you. My, my question as it relates to nine dash three is, is, is the comment relating to the council? There, there is, there's no reporting. Yes, there's, the mayor has as, as he sits on the, the Board of Education, has access to the information, the chief financial officer, the BET. But there's currently no reporting to the council, to any committee of any of these expenditures. So is so my question about, is this a, in, a new item that the council in some shape or form will be receiving these quote-unquote reports?
Well, it would not just be the council, it was all the others who probably have access to the data. I'm trying to remember the genesis. I see Carl has his hand up, maybe he does. I'm trying to remember.
I, as I recall it, Greg Ed and Jim have all kind of capsulated this now. That was the sticking point. That the point was made that they already do this, it's available. And they saw this as something, I think, one, it was kind of territorial, but it got off of that. It really boiled down to where it was time-consuming to do this again. They didn't have enough people to do this. They'd have to maybe hire somebody to do this type of thing. And they pushed back rather hard that this was a report that they would have to do, that they felt is already out there.
And I think that's right. I think it's a, it's, it's it's frankly a waste of their time, because it's something that we could get from the Finance Department. It's, it's already available. It's not, it doesn't require a specific report. It's it's already available. It's not like it doesn't require a specific report. And if it does from them, then it should be a report from every single department. And I don't think any single department uh does that kind of reporting. I think it all comes from the Finance Department.
And that's exactly how I remembered it. That's that's was the sticking point.
Yeah, I think that makes sense though. So.
Now, again, I'll look at the history of this. I I it might be the annotation might be off on it. Um, I'm even as I'm reading it again, we haven't read this in a while. Um, even the first part of it, uh the first two sentences seem more appropriate to go into the budget section altogether. Uh, as I'm looking at it. So I marked it and I let me just use this as a a teaching moment. In this process, you're going to have your next meeting is your public hearing. And then your meeting thereafter is the meeting where you vote on the recommendations you're going to make to the Charter Revision Commission. So I've marked this because it sounds like at least a few of you, maybe many of you uh would be interested in asking the commission to take another look at this and possibly eliminate it or make it more universal, however it is you want to approach it. So what you need to think about, I will mark them and what I'll try to do with the president is draw up a list of the things that have come in as a result of discussions. Because I've been taking pretty careful notes and marking up the document based on our meetings here. Um, we'll probably have a general recommendation to, you know, fix all the erratas, the Scrivener's corrections, those kinds of things, some of the other editorial type things. So we don't need to mark each one. But things like this, we're probably going to have to put as a separate item uh for the commission to consider in its for its final report. So I just wanted to stop there since we've kind of found something that uh there's um some ambiguity and concern about. So I I I apologize if I'm going on too long, but I wanted to give you an idea of how we should be thinking as we're going through this.
If I could just make a recommendation also, you might have our Chief Financial Officer, just take a look at those and get his feedback, even if it's only a couple of minutes, just what he thinks about it.
Yeah, he um I will. He he spent a lot of time on the budget section with us.
Yeah.
But I'm not sure he looked at this section, but I'll 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 call him uh uh call Henry uh if not tomorrow, Monday.
Thanks.
Are there any other issues? That's kind of the it for the Board of Ed? You know, going to the budget section of the document. And so um um what we tried to do here is we tried to restructure a lot of new provisions here. We have the cooperation clauses. Uh, I've been putting cooper clauses interest throughout the state. Um, they don't have they don't have um a any self-executing authority, but by virtue of being in the constitutional document, it gives a mayor an ability to deal with an errant agency. Usually it could be a Board of Education. I don't you had uh that problem in Norwalk, other communities of the relationship between um the city, the general government and Boards of Education can be tenuous. And so the cooperation clauses came up as a result of those tenuous relationships. But some of the mayors have found this to be very, very useful and very helpful. Uh, as we uh put them into the charters. Um, we also break down the operating, kind of a broad definition of the operating and capital budgets. Councilmember um Nudzuski Eichner did raise a question about two-year projections. I don't know what she means by is that substantive enough? It's her understanding that the practice of doing so, they had this in the past, although that would you that that would need to be confirmed. You can do projections. I think we have them uh next door. I'm working. I just redid the Stanford Budget Provisions. And they wanted to go to a two-year budget, which you can't do uh because the mill rate comes out on an annual basis. Uh, we're not a sovereign. We have to kind of live with the way the state laws uh uh require us to do uh to do the budgets. But you can certainly do projections if that's of some interest to you. And so if there's a general interest in that issue that was raised by the council member, I can talk to Henry about some of his thoughts on that. Uh, if uh two-year projections are something that there's general interest in. We can, you know, it might be a recommendation that you ask us to take a look at. So I just wanted to raise that. Did I get your question correctly? Uh?
Absolutely. And what I meant by the substantive, I know we're not trying to make structural changes. So I, you know, sort of I I want to be leery of raising things that might be perceived as structural changes. That said, I find the multi-year projections extremely helpful in terms of the capital budget. I think it would be extremely helpful in terms of the operating budget as well. And this seems like an opportunity to raise that. Um, and it was my understanding someone had told me that this did used to happen in the past. I don't know if that's correct or not. But if so, then it would seem like less of a new thing and more of a codification of of practices we have engaged in.
Yeah, and what we might be able to do, um we obviously want to talk to the mayor, obviously, who's here. Uh, uh, from an administrative point of view, might want to talk to the the Board of Estimate as well to see whether there's receptivity to that. It's really a reporting issue. And the real question is whether our systems are set up to handle that. Obviously, you do it on the capital side. You would think you'd be able to do it on the operating side. Um, so my um my thought on that is that if you're interested in that, talk to your colleagues. Try to get back to the president or to me um so that we can begin to think about what we might want to do to draft. Um, you know, for purposes in the next two weeks before before you take this action. You know, we don't need to do a lot, but if you if you're interested, it'd be nicer to have more information uh to go back to the commission as opposed to less. So it's legally feasible. The issue is whether or not it's the kind of thing that if you got consensus on, you would be able to move forward without much controversy.
Sure. And if you're talking to Henry anyway, it might also I'd be curious to hear Henry's thoughts on that.
Okay, I'll be happy to do that. And I see Councilman Frayer has his hand.
Yeah, I I just second that. Uh, you've got to talk to Henry about that. That's, you know, it's it's hard enough to do the budget today with one year going out one year um to to start to and I think we're just gaining some traction with them after this past year's budget where we and we hit them a little bit hard from the Board of Estimate standpoint that um they really held their feet to the fire. So exactly where why they're spending the money that they're spending. Um, I think that Henry um can can talk a lot more intelligently on this subject. Um, because it's going to take manpower to start to analyze all of the needs and check what those needs are for the city, for the operating department. So um I would get his take on that and uh I wouldn't be really excited if they couldn't do it right away. I think it's that's a it's a something that's going to have to be um
Transition.
Over a number of years.
Yeah, I I I was going to just say, Councilmember, I think it's the kind of thing either way that's really going to require a transition because it's a it's not just a structural change for Henry. It's a structural uh 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 change for all your department heads.
It's a learning curve for all.
Yeah, it's a huge learning curve.
We we found it very, very clear and talking to all the department heads that they were really not as as a student budgeting as maybe we had thought in the past.
Okay.
That's not.
I'll bring it up with Henry and see what he thinks. Um, I think it's the kind of thing I I would also say um the commission didn't spend um uh and correct me if I wrong, Madam Chair, we didn't spend any time really discussing this issue. It's the kind of thing I think you'd want to more do do more due diligence on as opposed to just jumping into it, but it might be an issue that's worth thinking about in the next two years, but I will talk to Henry about the issue when I give him a call.
Yeah, no, we had no discussion on that issue.
Okay. Thank you. So as we move on in this section, let me see if there's anything else. Um let's see where her Councilmember McMur's question goes to goes to the fiscal year. We'll get there in a second. We simply lay out you know, self-evident fiscal year uh is uh what it is, starting started this past um week. I guess there are questions on public inspection, which we'll get to in a minute. So we have these new provisions in here regarding public inspections. Uh, made some changes. I will take further review of it to make sure. A Councilmember Nudzuski Eichner pointed out that um we were using old language and we should try to conform it with the new definitions. Uh, and thank you very much. That was a very good thought, and that's what I've tried to do uh in this section. Councilmember McMur raised the question. Oftentimes, we as a council do not, it's in the crease here, do not uh get all of the information we need to assess the cap from the Board of Ed Norwalk Public Schools, whether it mean it seems to be an edited version abbreviated version of the budget. Is there a way to request a higher scope budget presentation that we should go through and have to decipher uh with the overall city budget? Um, my response to her was, I think that this new these new provisions do require uh greater information. Now, that being said, having all their line items is informative. It's useful to know what they are. But the council, especially in Norwalk, which just really is involved in sending caps, has no role whatsoever. There's no council in the state that has any role whatsoever in the line items in the budget. So while the information is useful, um and they should provide it. And it should be part of an overall bu- uh budget package. You should have a sense of what the department is spending. You should be able to know that when they're coming to you with the bottom line, that the that what they've said in the past, that they were going to spend money on this or money on that uh is true. Uh, is very often, in my experience, it it's it's not. Uh, and but but the but the opportunity for a council to look at that information and the Board of Estimate as well as the mayor is useful. So I think we do request comprehensive information. So they 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 can't decide uh what information they want to provide you. Henry, the mayor, the council, the BET all have the ability to establish procedures. And the Board of Ed is bound to follow those procedures. Um, there's very clear case law on that issue. And I'm very confident and very comfortable that there's case law on that issue. Um, so you're entitled to whatever information you're looking for. Just answer the question more completely. The um next provision is public engagement. It basically says that all the parties to the budget, and I have the Planning and Zoning Commission in here because of the role they play on the capital side, um have to really engage uh the public in uh throughout this process. And you'll see there's a number of uh public hearings that are required. And I see that there is another issue that was raised by Councilmember Nudzuski Eichner. Uh, I will take a look at that. The issue is the yellowed language um that the mayor shall provide electronic access to the budget. Um, I believe when you comply with the public notice requirements as we state in the earlier part of the paragraph, that is true. Um, so if that is in fact true, um, you know, I just think you should make it a um I can fix it as a Scrivener's error if you guys are comfortable with that. Or you can just make them formal recommendations. So it's marked up. It's yellow. When I send this over to you, you'll see you'll see the things that are that are marked up and we can uh figure out what what items should be substantive uh recommendations from the commission. And so the process starts earlier from a public perspective um with an October first joint public hearing where the mayor, the CFO, President of the Common Council, chairs of the uh chair or chairs of the council committee or committees authorized to review the budget. Uh, the Chair Pro Tem of the Board of Ed, since the mayor is the Chair of the Board of Ed, uh the Chair of the Planning Zoning Commission, uh and a member of the Board of Estimate is one that Nora didn't get. Uh designated by the mayor would conduct kind of a initial pre-budget public hearing that gives the public an opportunity to come out and speak on any matters they think you should be thinking about as you're beginning to formulate the budget. Um, that is a new provision. The other provision that is new is that there's a requirement, although I think you do a pretty good job with it, of providing a budget calendar and publishing the budget calendar on a on a reg- on uh no later than October fifteenth so that all the departments know what their obligations are and when and the public has a sense of what those obligations are and when. Any questions up to this point?
Um, the only thing I'd ask, sorry, I forgot to raise my hand. Um the public engagement pieces.
Yeah.
And I guess I guess that and also sort of the putting things on the city website. Um, I know this is something that the IT department's working on. Um, but a lot of times a complaint we get from the public involves people not being able to find things on the city's website. Um, I think that this is not, I don't know if this is something that should be in the charter, but when we think about sort of what we're requiring administrations from now in the future to do, um making sure the that documents like this are easily accessible. Um, and not just say, oh, it's on the website, but actually a defined link um that people know where they can go. Um, I think it's just the absolute best way to show complete transparency. Um, I know that this the mayor's administration has been completely um forthright and willing to be transparent. It's just a matter of making sure that that's actually what happens. And then there's this public engagement piece, which I don't actually know what that means because it just says um must develop and publicist procedures designed to encourage public participation. So I I don't, I don't know what that means.
Well, it means whatever the bodies want it to mean. It means that if the council wants to establish uh workshops, whatever it may be to encourage public participation uh in the process, um they can do so. If you think we can tighten, if there's a way to tighten it up, we can. Um, again,
Yeah.
it's establishing a broader constitutional standard so that the players who are subject to that can decide that they want to do things to help publicize procedures to encourage people to come out to meetings, participate in whatever um other activities there are. Let me just answer, let me just deal with your first question. I see that Councilmember Frayer has his hand up. If you look at the public notice to sit uh definition in 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 the early articles of this uh subsection twenty-nine of Article of Section um uh two dash two, um it it's it's not just website. So there is a broad public notice standard, and I would say Councilmember uh Goldstein, that if you you should look there. That's where we should tighten up the standard to make it clear is I would take a look at the definition of public notice and see if we should say something more there to give more direction on the website part of it. It's not just not relying on website. There still is hard data, hard copies, et cetera. What we did do here is we moved away from newspaper notice. Um, unless it's
Yeah, that that makes sense.
Yeah, unless it's statutorily required or if you make a judgment call that you think it's necessary, you can do it, but it's not mandatory in all cases. You'll see it. You'll you'll probably see it in the taxing district sections. We didn't we didn't mess with the taxing district section, so we didn't um play around with any of that stuff at all. So I would recommend um Councilmember uh Goldstein, you'll take a look at the notice section. And if you have any thoughts on that, you know, give me a buzz or
Yeah.
bring it up.
That I'd be happy to do that. I would just note that that section you referred to um the language is almost identical when discussing the website. So I figured it was worth bringing up here tonight.
Absolutely.
Um, but but I'm happy to talk about this with you offline. That's no problem.
If you think it needs to be tightened, let's figure out a way to do it. That's all.
Okay.
All right. Councilmember Frayer.
Um, thank you. Um, the number three, the initial public hearings in October first, how does that seems incredibly early? I mean, that's you've only got maybe five months of actual in there.
Well, it's early, but the idea, and I've been seeing this, I I was Chair of the Finance Committee of my uh Bernard's in New Haven for eight years. And um the idea of this is really a public forum to try to get a sense from the public. This is not on the budget. It's not reviewing how the money is being spent unless somebody raises a question about how it's being spent. It's an opportunity before you really start uh asking department heads to do certain things is to gauge uh whether there's public opinion that might tell you to move in another direction or that there's something important to the public that they want to address in the process. I think that was the intent of having this.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I mean, it's, it's just, you, you're almost getting to the point where you gotta, you're working on, and you should work on budgets year round, but um, I, I, I think it'd be very difficult for people to department heads, operating department heads to uh, comment intelligently on, on increases or decreases or
It's not for the department heads, this is for the members of the public.
I know, but the members of the public are, are telling the government what they want, right?
Yeah.
So the, you're asking the department heads that the mayor, the chief financial officer is going to go down to those department heads and say, hey, start looking at this and tell me whether this is something that's feasible or not. Um, I, I just think it was, I think the timing is just a little bit premature, but um, I understand what you're saying. So I, I can't argue with the, the concept that we should all be thinking about what we want to, where we want to spend our money and how much money we have, can afford to spend. And maybe from that standpoint, it might be good to, to get these things out in the open rather than waiting till the budget's all done and then people complaining.
Yeah. No, I mean, look, are you going to stop people from complaining? Probably not. Um, is it another forum for public participation? I think that that's what the commission.
Okay.
Yeah. I see the president has his hand up.
Uh, yes, thank you, uh, Attorney Mennick. Uh, I just wanted to comment that um, in, in recent years, um, the council, uh, the Finance Committee of the Common Council and the Finance Committee of the Board of Education have held early meetings um, at the beginning of October to discuss expectations as it relates to the ongoing um, uh, budget activities. But that has been specific to just the Board of Education. And um, in each year of those years, uh, it was somewhat premature for the city, on the city side, to uh, provide uh, any true information because we were just, you know, through the Chief Financial Officer initiating the budget cycle process in terms of going out to each of the departments, conducting interviews and assessing uh, what they have spent previously and what their expectations were going forward. But I will state again that in early October, uh, we have held joint meetings with the, specifically the Board of Education. Uh, and, and that's primarily because they're the largest part of the budget. Uh, to understand what their expect, expectations were going into the budget cycle.
Thank you, Mr. President. Madam Chair.
Yes, um, we actually spent a lot of time thinking about this particular section uh, in order to address many of the comments that were made from the public, that they didn't feel that they had input early enough, uh, that decisions were really made and they were reacting to, to those decisions. Uh, once the department heads had presented their budget. And uh, one of our uh, commitments to uh, the citizens in Norwalk was to uh, to gain as much transparency as we possibly can in the budget process. So this was intentional on our part. And um, there were numerous people, and a lot of the comments were relative to uh, energy considerations going forward uh, with the city, that, that kind of thing. But um, um, it was something that the we felt would be a plus for the city.
The other thing I want to point out as we're going through this, Henry spent a lot of time. This is the first major section. I see the mayor's hand up. The first Pat, he can confirm this, the first major section that we tackled back in November, December, January.
Yeah.
And we had a lot of Henry's time in a pre-budget period. We lost Henry once the budget started, but Henry was very active. Uh, all of the, all of the dates that we have in this charter um, in this proposal, we're worked through with Henry. Uh, and uh, uh, so I just want to let everybody know that the Charter Commission just didn't uh, create the dates that are in here. We worked very closely with the, with the, with the CFO. Mayor.
Uh, thank you. Yes, uh, I agree with this uh, provision. I think it's critically important that we let the public know that the budget process is coming and they can comment on any thoughts and ideas that they might have. And department heads can take that information um, and take their lead from it. So the department head may be asking for uh, one thing and the public says, well, you know, uh, this is also important. And then, uh, because what, what happens now is the department head puts together their budget, comes to the BET and by that time, you know, the public comment, it's really pretty much a fait accompli. Now, I think if this, uh, if the public can uh, make some comments ahead of time, give us an idea, like you said, solar or some other uh, resiliency, some other uh, uh, coastal resiliency, those kinds of things that people might say, you should really take a look at this.
Uh huh.
So I, I think that's important.
Thank you, Mayor. So just moving on, we kind of walked through what we tried to do in the charter is to have kind of a linear process laid out where we start um, with the estimates at the beginning of the budget process. Um, Councilmember Najolski Eichner had a question. Um, and I'm more than happy to be guided by the council on this. Uh, and maybe we don't have to state it every time we make the reference, but um, it's very important. And again, this may be part of the legacy of dealing with Boards of Ed throughout the state. But it's, it's very important um, to just underscore that the Board of Ed has to comply with every element of the uh, budget process. Um, as every other department, we call them really budgeted entities, and the Board of Ed and the Norwalk Public Schools are that. We tend, I tend to in charters to delineate both the, the governing body, the Board of Ed. Sometimes the whole system is called the Board of Ed, the Department of Ed. Sometimes they don't like to be called departments, um, but they are a department. Um, and, and I believe you call them the Norwalk Public Schools. That's why we do that. You'll see that repeated throughout. If um, if um, it, it concerns you, we could just probably define it um, in one place, so we don't have to. I think that's maybe what Councilmember Najolski Eichner was getting at, and I'm more than happy to uh, recommend, or you, if you recommend that to the commission, I'm sure they'll be more than happy to comply. The intent was not to uh, you know, take a um, yeah, we're not to make a thousand cuts, but just to make a point is, I think, the important issue here. And, and so, did I see a hand? I don't. Patty, do you have your hand up, Madam Chair?
No, no, I don't.
All right.
It's my cove lighting.
I didn't want to ignore you.
In the background.
Yep, so ten dash two is the estimate section. Really nothing new in here, except, you know, some terminology. Um, then we have, we get to the mayor's um, uh, proposed budget. Uh, Councilmember Najolski, there's a date for the submission on or before February fifteenth. The Councilmember uh, raised the issue whether it should be at a meeting of the council. And I just didn't know whether that was logistically necessary. I did not make that change as an editorial change. It sounds like a pretty substantive question. So maybe I'll defer to the Councilmember, see if she has any thoughts on why it should be at a meeting as opposed to just a fixed date.
Uh, no, I really was responding to the language. Um, so the Board of Estimate, so the submission is supposed to go to the Board of Estimate Taxation at a meeting. And then it says the council on or before, so there's no specification there. So I didn't know if there is.
Okay, I see your point. You know, there's no symmetry. You're right.
Right.
It is a symmetrical question. And I don't know what you guys think. I mean, if you want to have it in a meeting, it, it, uh, I hadn't thought about that.
Well, I would, I mean, in general, his, in, as a practical matter, I think we typically get the budget the same time the BET does. I mean, once the mayor releases it, he releases it, correct? So I, I was a little uncertain as to who's, the sort of, the multiple dates here as well.
Because it's not formally presented, it's not formally presented to the Common Council until after it's formally presented and voted on by the Board of Estimate. I think that's the way it works.
I think that's the, that's the
Right. But it should either be at a meeting of the uh, Board of Estimate Taxation and uh, then at a meeting of the Common Council or uh, delete the at a meeting uh, uh, of the Board of Estimate because there is no symmetry. And I think that's the issue.
Yeah.
So it's either one or, it's either you do both or you don't do any, because it, it stands
So just take this out, take this out or put meetings for both.
Yeah, which, and if you were like too wordy to do both, you might as well just take it out because it, it goes without saying.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, let me, uh, actually, this is my markup copy. I gotta be careful. Uh, I, I will mark this for deletion uh, on my baseline document. I gotta keep everything straight here. I wanted to show you the changes. Um, so uh, we'll just take care of this. Delete, whoops. Oh, I just pushed. Thank you. Very useful. Hopefully this won't take too much longer. I just want to, want to make sure that we cover everything. So we got that taken care of. Again, uh, talks about the narratives and recommendations that are in the budget. Again, we went over all this with Henry. He felt comfortable with it. Um, this is the section um, B, where we talk about line item requests and narratives um, proposed uh, by all budget entities, including the Board of Ed. I think this covers that issue that Councilmember McMur raised earlier, uh, so that this requires all that data that she was looking for. Um, so I think that, that, um, that's how that is addressed uh, in the charter. Um, then you have the review.
Yeah.
But by the Board of Estimate, we had the word taxation repeated twice here. And the next issue is another issue that was raised by Councilmember, there's two of them right here. This is you want to explain this, uh, Councilmember Najolski Eichner, what your concern was?
Um, sure, uh, so I guess it's, it's a little bit, again, I think it's as much as anything, just sort of a, a trying to wording and figure this out correctly. This seems like a description of the um, Board of Estimate Taxation's sort of large powers, right? Like the power to levy taxes in the fiscal year. This seems like a description of what they do in general. It doesn't necessarily seem to me that specifically belongs in this moment in the sequence. Um, if that makes sense, like they're not, this is not, this is not describing what they're doing at this moment in time in response to um, what they've just received from the uh, mayor. So I, I feel like this whole section either needs to be someplace earlier on.
Okay.
Yeah, do you see what I'm saying? So it's just, it's a, it just seemed a little bit out of step with this. You're very thoughtful sequencing. The rest of this is a beautiful sequencing of like step by step what's happening. That's all I was trying to
Do the former members of the Board of Estimate agree with that?
What, what are you referring to? I'm not following.
Ten dash four. Um, here, let me go up this section.
Okay.
But it seems to be more, she may be right, that these are, you were addressing powers to establish the mill rate. Um, maybe it should be in an introductory section of the, of the budget section or in the Board of Finance Powers and Authority.
Right.
But, but the perishing of information, I guess, is year round. Am I correct on that? That you're always?
Yeah. So we were just talking about earlier, right? The Board of Estimate Taxation gets information, you know, whenever they need it from the, you know, through the CFO, but it's, you know, you know, the department says you're required to provide it. So this, these feel both feel much more general to me.
Yeah, the mayor and the members of the, the former members of the Board of Estimate to give, give their thoughts on this.
I, I think that it's, this is, correct me if I'm wrong, Ed, but I mean, this is basically what we do, but there are iterations of it. I think this is a kind of a generic explanation of what the Board of Estimate would do.
So she's right, that we, maybe we should move this into the section of the charter where the powers of the Board of Estimate are generally discussed.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that, that could make sense, yes.
All right. Good catch.
And it could very well be that once it's moved into that section, it could also, it could, it could very well be that it's redundant. I'm not sure what's in that section.
Yeah, no, yeah. Not the BOT, the BET, okay. I will, uh, I will take a look, because what I'm going to try to do after this meeting tonight, not tonight, I will not do it, but tomorrow morning, is I will try to get uh, to uh, Zuma the markup based on these discussions. These are not formal changes, but these are the discussion points that we've had to get this published, because if we're doing, I'll, I'll talk before we leave. I think we had a tentative schedule for a public hearing on Monday, Mr. President, so I don't know if it's been noticed. But if, if there's going to be a public hearing, we should probably have something um, uh, published tomorrow. And I'll, so I'll make sure we get of, uh, uh, an update of the document with all the questions. Uh, if the, if the council members don't mind, I will include their questions in the side panel to let the public know that this document has been run through very substantially by, by the members of the, the council. But we'll talk about the public hearing before we close out tonight.
Um, and Steve, just real quick, I had another question on ten five.
Yes.
Um, so it was really, yeah, so I'm also a little confused about how ten five operates with ten three. Because the, so is this, is this ten five just requiring that what happens in ten three with the mayor providing a budget to the BET and the council, then also get published subsequent to that or before that, like five days before the fourth Monday of February is basically the twenty-second of February? I think most of the time, you know, there are somewhere around there. So is this something separate? Is this just saying that when the council, when the mayor gives it to the council, it also needs to be publicly noticed?
This is current language, and I have to tell you, I don't know the answer.
Correct.
I, I had the same level of confusion. I broke it out because I was, and I never got an answer from uh, our CFO on this
Okay.
in terms of distinguishing it. Uh, so I, it was dangling here.
So that makes, yeah, I get that. And I, I think as a practical matter, it basically means there has to be public notice at the same time it goes to the council. And I think we do that. I mean, I, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, but I think once it goes to the BET, really, there's, you know, it's published. So
It's kind of interesting that they say the fourth Monday of February of each year, five days before that. Uh, in, in the next set, in the next uh, line, it gives a date specific. So perhaps, perhaps a date specific in ten five would be a little uh, clearer. And uh, everybody would know exactly what that is.
Yes, completely. And we obviously want it published before. I mean, yeah, so I think I agree with you, Mayor. I think that would be helpful.
Um, who should I talk to about a date? Henry?
I think Henry would be the best person.
Yeah.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, uh, can we go back up to ten three B? Um, the opening line with the parentheses around, including the Board of Education. Can we eliminate the parentheses? It just sort of is a little um, extra that could be an issue, become an issue.
So do what? Have commas?
Well, you know, we had a lot of discussion about the Board of Education being a department of the city, obviously, which we know, but is argued at times. And so, uh, if we want to keep the language, including the Board of Education, can we just get rid of the parentheses? It makes it a less um, uh, a turn, less noticed on it.
Right.
Not, not as, it's, it's more subtle is what I'm trying to say.
All right.
And we did have a lot of discussion on that concept, so that's why I'm bringing it up.
Whoops. Okay. I, I'm, I'm sorry for doing that, but I'm trying, I can't.
Yeah.
Be careful, I'm marking up this document and thinking it's done, you know. Um, all right, let's move on. Whoops. So then we go to, and this is an interesting question, because I think uh, again, uh, some questions came up. By the way, Mr. President, we still need to figure out all of these voting standards. So sometime before uh, sometime before you act on it, uh, later in a couple of weeks, um, I think the nineteenth is the tentative date. Uh, we need to make sure that you're comfortable, that the members are comfortable with the standards. So I ask every member to take a look and make sure, I, I highlighted all I, I highlighted all the standards. We have a defined term for what a majority vote is. And so the question becomes. If you want an alternative to what a majority vote is. Uh, the defined term. Let us, let me know where those are, so I'll apply the term where it should be applied. And apply the alternate where it should be applied. So that's why throughout this document, you'll see the yellow markings. On the affirmative vote. Of a majority, two thirds, whatever the standard is. Is Mark. Sure that, uh. That you guys have an opportunity. It's a rare opportunity to really have some. Discussion about the standard that's set in the Charter for the votes that you take.
Yeah.
Yep. Question?
So at some, so the distinction is, uh, the majority of the common council present and voting or. Of the actual numbers.
Yeah. Let me see how it's defined. Um. I'm working on three charters, I apologize. Majority of vote of the councils defined as the affirmative vote. Of at least. A majority of the members of the council present and voting. So it's a pretty loosey goosey standard. So it's a present and voting standard. So. If you want it to be entire membership. Keep it. Uh, if you want it to be the defined term. We need to know, that's all. I'm saying is that, uh. Uh, we have the defined term. Uh, in, and so you need to, um. Look at these things inside. Now, this is a pretty important matter, uh, you know, your maximum limit on the total appropriation. And so. Uh, you may wanna have a higher standard on it. So I don't, I don't know, but that's your call. Uh, and I just wanted to make sure that, uh.
I think it might present a problem if, um. Some council member was. Uh, uh, in the hospital or not, and I'm able to vote or something of that nature. And therefore, um, we couldn't have a vote on it because we don't have the entire council there.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, if you say something like, uh, a minimum of two thirds of the council or something of that nature, I think it, it's safe. But, um. But, and again, the entire membership of the ca- council present and voting could mean eight people as well, which might not be enough.
Right.
That's, that's the problem with that. And that's why important matters like this, you wanna have. Some higher standard, so, uh. You know. So, but that's why I highlighted it. So I, we, we did not make a judgment. The Commission did not make a judgment. We thought since it was going to the council. That we'd give the council. Full. Uh, ability to address the issue.
Well, on one issue and a vote, it's a super majority plus one, which be, which be eleven. Um, I don't know if people would feel comfortable with that because that could mean. For whatever reason, there could be four people absent and not voting, but that's not very likely either.
Well, that's good. Let's consider the last time that we had a vote on the budget. On the cap. Uh, it was, uh, what, an eight to six vote? Or something like that, uh. So that was the entire, so that was, that, that was a super majority, uh, or.
Yeah, the, the entire council was there for that, yes.
Uh, the overall numbers, but, uh, but it was very.
I just think you put a, uh, a very, uh. Strong, uh, restriction. Um, if you will, uh, on the fact that it has to be the entire council membership. Cause we don't know what, if anything, could happen. To render that not doable.
Oh, uh, Mayor, I did not propose current charter, uh, so.
Right.
That's why I highlighted it because I think you need to look at these things. So I, I think the points you're making are all quite valid. I didn't want you to think that either I recommended this or the Commission recommended it.
Right, it's in the current charter.
Yeah, so that's why I thought it was important since we're defining the term. To really come to grips with every decision. There's a charter based decision so that you can, um. Uh, you can decide, um. What you want to do. So all I'm saying is that I don't know how the president wants to do this. Uh, but, uh, there should be some discussion. Somebody needs to go through the document and figure that out and. And lead the charge so that we can fix it by the time you send this back to the Commission. Like in a couple of weeks, alright? I just, sorry to be redundant, but I just, uh, wanna make sure it gets done. Um, Councilmember McMur had a question on this section. Let me see if I can. Read it better on the screen. I am not suggesting we do this now, okay? Discuss how the budget related to, okay, yeah, this was her, her broader question, and I think this is probably one of the issues you'll look at within the next two years. Is what is the respective role of the council versus the B E T? Uh, so I think she just wanted to raise it. To kind of, uh, earmark it for further discussion. I don't think there was a need to answer that at this moment, so, uh. So. Uh, again, Councilmember Najoski Eichner. Raised the question. About the clause. Let's see if I can get the whole thing on the screen at one time. Um, yeah, here it is. I think it's all here now. Um, she was concerned about the as set forth in the mayor's proposed budget. And whether or not that, um, impacts on the ability of the council. To amend the limit. Uh, proposed by the mayor. And my response to, uh, to her on this document, she has not heard the response until now. I apologize, Nora. Um, is, uh, what is the current, is I, I don't know, it's the current language. What is the current practice? Does the council have the ability to raise the limit? Uh, at the present time, I don't know the answer to that. It's, it's never been, you do.
Yeah, we do.
And does anybody think that this language? Limits it? The as set forth. The way I looked at the language. Was it was simply saying the mayor's setting it forth in his proposed budget. You have the ability. To, uh, act on it. So, um. If, if there's clearer language, I'm more than happy. This is not my document. This is yours in the end. More than happy to, um. Modify it if, uh, somebody has any thoughts on that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I can, I can follow up with you, but we definitely, there's plenty of language in here, right? About amending and, you know, amending, modifying, increasing, decreasing. Like I think something that's a little clearer. Um, that we're not just, um, you know. Voting on the.
We'll talk about that offline. Alright, great, super. And obviously we've reported to everybody on the council. Um, and, uh. If everybody agrees on that, so. Um. I think. Um, again, no significant changes here, uh, but, um. So the, the next question that Councilmember Najoski Eichner raised. Was whether. The B E T can. Uh, raise the maximum. Limit. Um.
Yes.
Set by the council.
The answer is yes.
I think the answer is yes.
But that requires a two thirds vote of the common council.
Two, uh, of the common council?
Uh, for the budget, wants to be.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah, that's coming up. But this is of the Board of Estimate.
Yeah, uh, what if estimate can increase the, what the common council has. Uh, voted on, but that then has to go back to the common council for two thirds vote. Of the common council to improve that suggested increase.
Alright. Nora, you, are you comfortable with that answer?
I think that, no, I think that's fine. I just wanted to be clear, um. Yeah. I just wanted to make sure that it was clear that they could. Um. Not just make alterations within the cap, but also raise the cap. Um, do you see where there's, there's like slightly two different. Potential, uh, ways that could be interpreted, and I'm just thinking it might be best.
Why don't you add the cap? I mean, in there, uh, including.
But that's the maximum limit of total appropriations. That's the cap.
Right, so what I'm saying is what it says they can make alterations to the mayor's proposed operating budget, but I think then they may also need to be able to make alterations, increases and decreases to the mayor's proposed operating budget and the maximum limit.
Because that's what you do. You know, if I, if I put in a budget. And it's X number of millions of dollars. The Board of Est- uh, Board of, uh, sorry, the common council sets. The cap, the cap that they're comfortable with. It could be higher, could be lower. Uh, and also I noticed that it does have. On, uh, section B here, ten eight B. Affirmative vote of two thirds of the entire council membership. So I don't know if the. Two thirds vote, uh, for, uh, the other part would be, uh, consistent or, or if it's different.
Well, I think, yeah, I assume that that two thirds vote meant. Uh, because after, in terms of the timing, once it goes. So after the BT gets it, then it goes to, to the board, to the common council again. And if the common, and if the Board of Estimate, uh, does not. Come over, does not recommend that number over the cap, then that's the end of it. There's no, there's no action by the common council, but if the Board of Estimate comes in over the cap, then the co- council. Uh, can, uh. Reject it by not, uh. By not approving it by two thirds vote of the common council.
Right, oh, but I was saying, I, I thought I was saying that. The initial vote was the entire membership of the council. And that is also setting the cap. This is amending the cap and it's two thirds. So it's almost like. The two thirds vote could overrule the, the entire council's vote if we had.
But two thirds vote only occurs if the, if, I mean, in practice, I'm not sure that the wording is consistent, but in practice. It only occurs or is necessary if the, if the B E T. Uh, uh, comes back to the common council with a number greater than the cap that the B E T, that the common council had originally approved.
Yeah, that should probably be, be made clear in there then.
Yeah.
Well. Yeah.
Go ahead, Dora.
No, I was just saying, I think, I actually think you're, I think there's two separate issues here, Mayor. I think you're raising the very important question about this whole. Entire membership of the council versus present and voting, which I agree with you on. I think present and voting. Is probably better just because otherwise you run the risk of, you know, someone being, so, but I think.
Rendered inactive, yeah, yeah.
Right, exactly. So I tend to agree with that. I actually disagree with Ed on his, on his other point though, or this point about. I think that. I personally feel strongly that the council should be able to raise the limit or decrease the limit. Whatever the B E T does, I think the council should by two thirds. Vote be able to raise or decrease. Um, I don't see any reason to limit the council's authority here, and I think the. Point of having it be two thirds is that it's like a veto override, right? In the same way that in order to. Override the mayor's veto of an ordinance, we need two thirds.
Right.
This is a similar kind of thing. We would be overriding the board. If you take two thirds, but we should have the authority to do it in either direction.
So in other words, if the B E T comes in under. The cap. It should, the, the common council, because the, the cap after all is the maximum amount.
Right.
Right? The B E T then decides how much is gonna be spent. So if the B E T decides that we're gonna spend a million dollars less. Then that's the end of it, right? The common council can't, no, no, you're gonna spend a million dollars more because. The B E T decides what's spent. The board, the, the common council decides what the cap should be, what the maximum amount should be. So it's, it's. So if the B E T then says one million less. It's kind of superfluous for the common council to say, no, we, we want one million more because that's never gonna happen. The B E T sets. How much is going to actually be spent.
But what I'm saying is, Ed, is that I think that that's. Not correct. I think that if the council by two thirds says, no, actually, we want that additional million dollars spent. Then it is directing that the limit is that. And if you look at ten nine. It actually allows for the B E T to then have to adjust. To whatever that final number the council puts forward is, which would presumably include. The requirement then that it has to spend more to get to the council.
Having a B E T. Because, because what you're saying is that it doesn't matter what the B E T says. It's up to the common council. Why have a B E T at that point?
Well, because the B E T is still doing all the line items. The council can't direct the line items.
Well, the, the B E T is doing more than the line. B E T is setting the tax rate, is setting the mill rate. But that's what the B E T is doing. So it's not just a question of math. Because if it was just a question of math, you wouldn't need a B E T. You would just need the finance department to figure out what the math was. Um, based on the. You know, on the mills, you know, um, you know, so. It's, so what you're, so what you're suggesting is for, is basically rendering the B E T. Really superfluous in the process. And the B, and the, the common council sets the maximum amount that will be appropriated. The B E T that does the, the fine tuning and says, you know, we don't think that's enough. But we can't say so because we don't set the cap. It's gonna go back to the common council to set the cap. We're gonna suggest a million or two million more than the common council set. Now it's up to you to decide that's what you wanna do or not. But if we come in under the cap. We've decided that this is how much of what you say, we, the, the most we can spend is. We're spending a million less. It would be. It would. If the common council can go back and say, no, it's a million more. How does that work? It's, it's because the B E T sets how much will actually be spent.
Right.
Yeah, and that's not the way we do it now. That's not, uh, uh, ten nine A is not what, the way we do it now. It's a, it's a pretty major change.
Yeah.
Well, I don't think we're changing anything, Mayor. I think this is the language. I don't think we. Changed this. Let me take a little.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, this is, and just Mayor, so you know, this is the whole conversation. Uh, this is the conversation I had with the Corporation Counsel's Office during this budget season. This is how I actually, this is the current language. It's broken up differently. It's rearranged, but and I, uh, got, I mean, Darren Callahan agreed with me. That actually what the, what the Charter language says actually is to allow the council to set to increase or decrease, and the, the B E T has to adjust.
But the B E T is not going to. The B E T is not going to direct a department to spend a million dollars more than they want, than, than they. Need to. Because the, 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 the B E T is the financial. Watchdog of the city. It's like, so, so, so what you're saying is that. We're going to direct a department to spend a million dollars more or whatever, over the course of all the departments, a million or two million more. Than what the financial arm of the city says. Is. Appropriate. Is financially feasible, is, you know, whatever. It's, there would be no point in having a B E T at that point.
I mean, but Ed, I think that the part of the point of this, right, is that at the end of the day, budgets are. Are decisions on what the constituency wants spent, right? And if we as a council are saying that based on what we're hearing from our constituents. We believe that the B E T has underfunded a department. We believe that the department actually needs more money to accomplish the task that the constituency wants to be completed. That is a, that is a valid, I mean, that is a really important form of. You know.
But then what you're saying.
Constituent input.
But then what you're saying is that we don't need a B E T.
I mean. This is, that is a structural question, I think, that, you know, goes beyond what we're doing here, because the B E T is still obviously performing an enormously important function. In doing the review and coming to the conclusions. I mean, that's why it would require a two thirds vote, like a veto of, like a veto of an ordinance, right? Or a veto override. It's the same idea. The B E T has done the review. If the council by a law, by super majority, however, agrees, thinks it should be differently, that's different than. The original majority vote, right? That's why there's a difference in the number of votes.
What you're saying is that the common council should set the taxes. Should set the mill rate. Should, should basically tell. Uh, the city of Norwalk how much taxes they're gonna. The residents of the city of Norwalk, how much taxes they're gonna pay. That. Used to be or is currently the function of the B E T. And so it's. You know, in, in some ways, look, the common council and the B E T work well together in this regard. The, the B E T is less, um, guided by. Politics and more by. Sort of. Fiscal issues. And the common council by definition is a political body. And so they work well together. Uh, but I think that if you're going to sort of basically strip the B E T of any. Uh, uh, of its current authority to be the fiscal watchdog for this, for the city, then there's no need, then there's no need to have the B E T.
And, and just as.
Yeah, I'll just say that this is, again, this is the current language, whether it's been interpreted differently in the past, this is the current language.
Yes.
Well, that gives, that then gives the common council line item control on the budget.
Yeah.
Well, it does.
Not really.
No, you can say, add, add, add X number of dollars to police vehicles. Add, uh, X number of dollars to the, uh, fire department equipment, add X number of dollars to, uh. Uh, something to do with the DP, uh, Parks and Recreation. Uh, you can add those line items based on what that language says.
Yeah, let me just jump in there, because I mean, I spent quite a bit of time on the budget this past year. Um, and, um, what Ed is saying is absolutely right. You know, what we and the B E T did. Would look line by line by line. At specific. Uh, expenditures that were made. And there are ups and downs, ups and downs. Uh, I can't imagine. That the common council would have the time. To do the same thing that we did in the detail that we had to go through. And you only have a short period of time to do it. You only have a month or two to do all of that. It's impossible. It's an impossible task to do. On the other hand, too, it's, it's a, it's a necessary check and balance. That, um. And which the B E T is, is. Is, uh, filled with financial experts that do budgeting. For example, my experience is working on an eight million dollar budget, an eight billion dollar budget. Every year. Um, and knowing how to go in and look at that and, and, and make decisions. I can't imagine that the common council. Could, you know, would have the, have the, have the time, the wherewithal to go through and do it at the same level that we would have done. Or did do, I'm sorry. Um, and, but your suggestion, or it really is just to, to get rid of the Board of Estimate in, in, in all shape or form. It would serve no useful purpose at all.
But, you know, I think to her to her point, though, the language of the of the uh of the charter. As currently written. Uh, you know, uh leaves an open question as to whether or not the practice has actually been true to the language of the charter. I've had conversations with uh. With Alicia King about this, and I think she was able to find out or cobble together pieces of the of the charter. That made it clear why this language has been interpreted the way it's been interpreted. I just can't. Uh remember that uh off the top of my head, but I think there isn't an email that she sent me at some point when I was a. Uh Chair of the BET, which if I find, I will circulate. But but admittedly, the language is. Unclear, at least if we're just looking at this section of the chart.
I think the chairperson might be able to clear it up or something, uh Ms. Bresch.
Now, I, yeah, I I I don't.
Yeah, she's uh coming off right now. Okay, but this way it right here then?
Whoever at five, six, seven, five, we're hearing some background information. Could you mute, please?
There we go.
There you go.
I uh Patsy, were you going to say something?
No, I didn't.
Okay, uh and I and I apologize. I I thought the debate was really useful, so I didn't, uh I wasn't interrupting. I'm sorry, I didn't recognize you. Uh one of the council members was uh had his hand up for a while, but I I thought that it was a useful debate. So you need to think about this. We have to, because this is current language, and so. I don't think we made any changes here, Patsy. Correct if I'm wrong on any of the procedural issues. So it it was simply a matter of breaking it down, and that's what we we found in a couple of other areas of the charter. Things that we didn't know existed. Um and um. And so you you may want to look at this or save the debate for two years from now, I guess.
In practice, practice almost became policy.
Yeah.
And what happens? What happens with this, as we said, the last fiscal year or for this coming year. The council added a million dollars uh to the budget. They did not allocate or indicate where that would be allocated, and the Board of Estiment Taxation. Uh did not amend or adjust the budget to include that extra million dollars.
Oh, they did not.
Okay.
No.
But again, Steve, just to clarify, though, we added that. It before it went to the Board of Estiment Taxation. Did not, so the Board of Estiment Taxation appropriated at a million dollars below what the council had set the maximum limit at. We did not do a two thirds vote to override that.
No.
Okay.
And no one, and then there was no attempt to do so, so there was no precedent as to whether. But that was a conversation to be had, and there was some back and forth.
So you did not challenge, you made a decision not to challenge, basically, is what it came down to.
Correct, yes, so um. But I to and to Ed's point, I also had this conversation with Alicia. Her interpretation of the. Um language around what the Board of Estiment Taxation then had to do once. Is so if the council had voted for. Oh, at two thirds to override and increase the limit. She was of the belief that the Board of Estiment Taxation could then, once again, not spend that money in their final budget. I disagree with that because, and when you read the language here, I don't think that's a correct interpretation of that language, but that was her interpretation. And why she felt that at the end of the day, it still was finally with the Board of Estiment Taxation. So that's where some of that back and forth was at.
But Nora, would you say that the council then can tell which line item that money goes into, and you have line item control in the budget?
No, but it just, it says that the council can set the maximum limit. So the vote, the the override vote would be to override the maximum limit. And the BET would then have to decide what to do with that additional money.
But Nora, what happens then, you're, so what you're doing is you're you're adding a million dollars to the taxpayer. Uh bill. So that means that you're gonna, the the BET would then have to go back, set the mill rate. So they would collect an extra million dollars that the BET believes would not be spent. You know, unless you give you, unless you put it in a specific line, it's not going to be spent. Who's going to spend it?
Well, I think that's exactly the point, is that if the council, presumably if the council is directing the BET, that we think an additional million dollars should be spent. We have trust that the BET should figure out where that million dollars would be most useful. I think that would be the idea.
But they're but but they've already, but it's not, so because they've come in under the cap.
They have already decided that you don't need that million dollars.
And I think that it would be, I would presume it would be taken in the same way that generally of, you know, a veto override is taken, right? If the council passes something, the mayor vetoes it, the council then overrides that veto. There's a clear message being sent, and the presumption is that. The um the messages conveyed that the weight of public opinion is requesting that something be done, right?
I understand that, but where do you spend the money? Who's going to get the money?
Yeah, who's going to spend it?
Well, again, I I I would have faith in the Board of Estiment Taxation to figure out what would be most usefully done with that money. I mean, again, I don't think it's typically unclear in the actual public debate, right? Typically, the actual public debate is providing a very clear indicator of what the um. The public intent is and what the BET is being asked to use that money for, but under the current charter, we couldn't direct it. It would be up to the BET.
But there's so much mischief associated with that. The 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 BET could put it all in the mayor's office. And the mayor cannot spend it.
Sure, I mean, but that's that's true of all of this, right? I mean. Under the current setup, because the the the, I mean, the council could set a cap. And the BET could assign, you know, three hundred million dollars to the mayor's office. There's absolutely nothing in the current charter that prevents that.
The point is that the BET is already decided what's what, how the money, you know, that we don't need a million dollars, you know, so we've gone under the the cap, so. And so that's in good.
But if the council, but if the council thinks that the BET is incorrect in their decisions, the council should have a way of conveying that information.
That's fine, but the BET's decided that, so they're going to put the million dollars in the mayor's office is not going to get spent.
And the taxpayers, taxpayers have just had to pay a million dollars more than they had to.
More taxes.
And I would think that the BET probably wouldn't make the decision that way, but I don't know. I mean, again, this this is not, this is not the. There's a whole debate to be had in two years as to how we should do this, and I have strong feelings about that. What I was really trying to draw attention to here is what the actual language says. Because what we want clarity on that, and the whole point of this exercise is to have clarity. So I don't want us to. Finish this this round, this year one vision of it, and still not have clarity on what the authority is or is not. That's really what I'm trying to say here, is that we, the whole point of this exercise is to have clarity, and at the moment, this is not clear.
No, I agree with, I agree with Nora on that. The issue here is, uh from my perspective, you have fifteen council people. And each one of them represents a district or a constituency. And therefore, that's when you can start getting, well, I need five hundred thousand dollars for this. I need a hundred thousand for that, almost like pork barrel politics. Where you put something in because you want something for this group, or you want something for that group. And I think that's why the Board of Estiment Taxation has been given. Uh whether or not within the charter, uh the. Uh ability to set the cap, not set the cap, but to either come in at the cap or under the cap. Based on what they find, uh the needs of the individual departments were. So I I'm surprised to see this in there, but Nora, you're absolutely correct. This is the la, this is the language. And we need to figure that out.
Uh I I just want to report that this particular issue did not really come up at all in in our review. But the issue regarding the Board of Estiment and Taxation that did come up from several people. Is the desire to have it be an elected office and not appointed. And so uh we were, as you know, charged not to make any major changes. And um to the charter, and we considered that potential to be a major change, so we did not uh recommend anything in that direction.
So um so to to, look, I think it's a really robust debate. I think you guys need to. Figure out, again, we did not change any of this language, so we need to figure out.
Yeah.
Uh how we're going to proceed in the next couple of weeks, so um so we should probably talk about that uh. Continue that debate and that discussion. I do have a question, and I came across this in your. Neighboring town, because I will point out for the record that the only two big cities in the state that have these types of systems. Are Stanford and Norwalk. You have an elected Board of Finance in in Stanford and the appointed BET. In um. In Norwalk, we actually used to have a Board of uh Board of Finance that was appointed New Haven. Uh in the that that went away in nineteen ninety or nineteen ninety one, and and since then, the legislative bodies had all the fiscal authority. And that is generally the case in most of our cities. But on the mill rate question, I've always viewed. The mill rate as uh as kind of a ministerial act. Um but it seems here from this language, where is it here? Uh what did I do with it? Um. Final actions here, okay, notice publication. Uh, yeah, here it is. In subsection C. It sounds like the, after the budget is set, the cap is set. The lines are set. The Board of Estimate and Taxation. Has the ability to make further alterations. In the estimates. Appropriations and tax rates as it deems, shall deem proper. And then it fixes. Then it then it then it sets the mill rate after that. Um and uh. And then no appropriation. Under C requires any further action by the council. What does, does the Board of Estimate actually modify? Any further under subsection C? And again, that's current language. Uh um in Stanford, they do. Uh a lot of people didn't understand this, but when I pulled the language, I did a restructuring of their finance section. I think the Board of Finance is a little upset that I. I discovered this, but it just, it turned out the Board of Finance there has the ability after the budget is set. After the Board of Reps in that town, like their city council votes on it, they can. Do some contingencies, they can do some other things. Uh that were not part of the budget process, and then they set the mill rate, because I was trying to figure out. Well, why the mill rate wasn't set by the legislative body, which takes the last. Has the last say in that town. It's a little different, but they they have the last say, and I didn't understand why the mill rate was not set by the legislative body. Uh what what happens here when the mill rate, before the mill rate is set? Are there additional budget actions taken by?
To the extent that the common council sets the maximum allowable expenditure. Sets the cap. The Board of Estimate can do anything under that cap. Uh it's only when they exceed the cap that they have to go back, that they can't, that they have to go back to the common council. So if they want to go into the fund balance to take an extra million dollars, that's that that's increasing. That's increasing the budget by a million dollars, even though it's not necessarily going to increase the taxes by a million dollars. You know, it's not going to affect. Um how much needs to be collected. But uh so even if they, so to the extent that they increase the budget, they have to go back to the common council, but. Uh if they come in under the budget, they uh because the the common council set the maximum allowable expenditure. The the BET can. Tinker. Uh uh under that and come up with a mill rate.
All right, so it's not a ministerial act. They do have discretion. They can increase up to the cap and and so that that takes into account those. That language. All right, I just wanted to get an understanding um. The uh. The um. Councilmember McMurr raised a question in subsection D, no further action by the council. Uh see, we mentioned the budget only, comes back to the council, the cap is increased, but can we move this up or down, make it more clear? Um I think we just had that discussion. Um so um. The next issue, these are pretty standard provisions, appropriations shall not exceed. The estimate of revenues. Couple typos. Um again, we need an answer. We need to to have a standard set here. Then we get to the special appropriation section. One of the things we didn't tackle. Uh I'll defer again to the chair or other members of the commission, largely because we lost Henry to the budget process. Is I was hoping we would be able to address issues of uh transfers and other kinds of things in the charter, but that'll be for another day. But here we have special appropriations. And uh. And and I guess Attorney Mc. McMuller raised the question uh. Uh of McMur, I spelled your name differently here, sorry. Uh. Uh. About the two year review, so I'm not sure. That um raises any additional issues, but I thought that. There was another question, special appropriation, hang on.
Oh, I had a very, very, um, well, it's.
Was it ninety versus thirty?
Yeah. Cause you have ninety, you have ninety in the first sentence and then thirty in the second.
Yep. I don't think we made that change, so I mean, I have. Any appropriations shall expended for any purposes unexpended shall be transferred. Into the trade nine days active expiration, all appropriate shall remain on the books to the credit.
Yeah.
Which is thirty days after expiration expiration. Yeah, I don't know if there's a distinction. I don't know if uh. Uh that's that again is current language. I don't know if there's a rationale for that. I will talk to Henry about that.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I just would want to double check. It would seem that we might need more than thirty days to close out the fiscal year.
I would think so too. Yeah, yeah, no, I agree. Um. I will uh mark those as a Henry issue. Okay, and then we move to capital budget. Now, your charter has been silent on, for the most part, on the capital budget, um and what we did is we went and took your capital budget ordinance. And constitutionalized it, basically to set it up. Um uh New Haven did this in the nineteen nineties, I uh um. Uh and and other cities have followed suit. Uh to treat the capital budget in the same way as the general fund budget. Most of the big cities. Do have the smaller towns create waterfall type capital budgets. I'm sorry, Mayor, you had your hand up?
Yeah, just just quickly, because I wanted to go back to the whole thing, and and I apologize. Uh want to go back to the council versus the BET. Uh I think that's something we really, really need to take a hard look at. Uh as I mentioned earlier, uh with the council. Uh they set the cap, and then the Board of Estimate and Taxation comes back. And indicates, okay, here's the money we're spending. We're spending less than the cap. We're spending more than a cap. With fifteen different council people, all representing, well, ten of them representing disparate districts and five representing the entire city. That lends to the possibility of just everybody wanting to add something to a very, to a specific line. And, you know, the sublime or the ridiculous, uh ridiculousness, it could get up to, you know, another five or ten million dollars added to the budget. Of people wanting to add different line items because of the constituency that uh that they've been talking to. I just think we need to really look at that very carefully.
Mm hmm. Thank you, Mayor. Um yeah, I think we need to uh work on clarification, make sure that uh everybody understands. What what's in the charter and and how that should be worked on, so we should look at that carefully in the next couple of weeks. Um. So again, on the capital budget, the um the. Was to bring it into the press. Um again, um. Councilmember Najolski, Iker raised a question in part A to make sure. It's consistent with the public notice provisions. I will take a look at that. Um she also raised the question in B, whether the capital projects program that's set forth here. Should be a defined term, and we do have a defined term. And maybe we have to go back and look at this again called capital budget items, so I guess that's different. So, yeah, so. I don't have an issue if if um everybody kind of agrees, we could probably move that to to the beginning of the document as a defined term. Uh the other side of the coin is it's only in this section um that it's referred to. Uh we could leave it either way. I I tend to like to have all my def, all the definite, my definitions and not my definitions, all the definitions. In one area, uh but you know, I can be sw, you know, swayed either way, so if uh. If that's the wish, I'd be more than happy to move it to the. Um. Definition sections. Anybody have any thoughts on that?
Yeah. Uh I think clarity on it is important, so we, if we didn't define it as a uh definition, I think we should. And and on on this sec, yeah, this was uh really, we felt very important to include. Uh and I spent a lot of time on this section. Uh uh addressing public concern that, you know, that it's not in the charter and, you know, it is an ordinance, but hard to find. And so bringing it into the charter, we felt was extremely important to do. The whole, the whole capital budget piece. I'm not specifically talking to anyone, one section.
So is there any objection or any concern about moving it to the definition section? So there's consensus, I'll just. So if there's consensus, I'll just do that as a.
Well, with Steve, are you saying moving it? I thought we were gonna just add. In the definition, the definition of the the five year pro- proposed five year program. Not to move this section, but to define.
It is defined. The five year program is def- well, is it? Hold on.
I thought we had done that.
The five year program capital expenditures is defined. This is. Yeah, uh must be. Yeah, this is in conflict with that definition. We what we may want to do is use that definition here. Yeah.
Yeah, have the language consistent.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, I'll fix that. Alright, thank you, Patsy for.
I'm gonna make myself a little badge that says consistency. I feel like that's mine.
That's your prerogative?
I I I I feel like poor Steve got so many comments from me that's like consistent on this, consistent on that. I've been obsessed about your Oxford commas and consistency. Sorry, Steve.
Well, he's heard he's heard it from me too, so.
No, I very much appreciate it. You all did on this.
No, ultimately, look, I take great pride in the work we do, and I do and and uh but this is your project. It's, you know, I'm your, I'm your. Hair stylist. I'm trying to make you all look real good.
And you've done a glorious job. It is it is gloriously beautiful.
Thank you. Um alright, so I'll fix that. Thank you, uh Patsy, for reminding me on that definition. Um. Look, hearings, so what is? Councilor McMurr, same here. I think more responsibly should follow the council than does an appointed commission. These positions should be elected. I don't know what that means, to be honest with you. This is the um. Oh, the planning and zoning. Oh, I see what you're saying. Traditionally, planning and zoning commissions play a role. Uh in the capital budget. There there, that's not an unusual provision. Um uh New Haven, that's not the case. I don't think it is in Hartford. But I think Bridgeport, Stanford, Norwalk, Danbury. Waterbury, I think. Um they do. So it's not an unusual position. And it seems to me, not to stifle anybody from discussing it, that it's more of a structural reform that you might want to look at. As you look forward to um uh a revision in the next two years. Uh any other substantive changes? I mean, basically, we took the uh. A- and again, I will fix all the capital projects program that I fixed from uh. Um councilmember Najolski Eichner's comments and and use the defined term that we came up with. At the beginning of the document. Do use the um. The P O C D. It just seems to me, I just noticed this myself, that it's defined below. Um. Um I want to make sure that we uh use it properly. Um. And um but no substance, we didn't make any changes to the, okay, here's a big substantive question, I guess. We didn't make any changes to your current standard. But uh councilmember Najolski Eichner has a question, can it amend? So the capital budget goes to the Board of Estimate. The board is then required to approve. The budget. Capital budget incorporating the mayor's recommendations, planning and zoning. And chief, the chief financial officer's recommendations. Um the question is, can they amend? I'm assuming. That they are not just uh an empty vessel that they would as a discretionary body, but.
I would assume so.
The language is not clear. I agree.
And that's totally exactly. I assume so too. I wasn't objecting to them to being able to do so. I just think the language isn't clear that that's their role here. Um.
It could very well be one of those situations where if they don't approve, they has to go back to the drawing board to the common council and. Uh things like that, rather than come up with your own. Thing. I mean, I I'm I'm not sure what the practice has been to date, but um I can't remember.
I I think the way it's been done is we've sent the capital budget to the council with a. A li- uh an amount of money. The council can tra- uh move money from one to another. They can't add any new projects, but they can move. Let's say we have seven million dollars for paving and three million for sidewalks. They could take. Five hundred thousand from the paving and move it to the sidewalks if they want. That that was the way it's always been. That's the way we've done it.
So it's like the opposite of the operating budget where the the BT has line item, you know, and the capital budget's the common council that has line item.
Uh yeah, kind of. If that's the way you want to look at it. They they can't add any projects. They can't take away any projects, but they can transfer money. From within that process, within the budget, within the recommended budget.
And then the BT has to approve it or not?
Oh, no, then it's done.
Oh, then it's done?
Yeah, then it's done.
Okay, right, okay.
But it looks like it goes to the BET first, then to the common council.
Right.
So it's first, yeah.
Yeah, this is the area where the where the council actually has more authority. Than it does under the um other, under the general budget.
But the overall budget doesn't increase or decrease. It's within within that category. So if it's a. If it's a public uh works budget and. I think it's related whether you transfer more money to sidewalks as opposed to paving. It's within the same, within the same uh department usually. So in other words, it wouldn't, you wouldn't go Parks and Rec giving money to public works.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, that may be the practice. None of that is in this language that I'm.
You're right.
No, I agree.
Yeah.
Can't argue with that.
Well, the thing that's not in the language is that the council may reinstate. And that's never been the process that we've used. So in other words, if we take out an item into budget, somebody must have spent. Thirty million dollars on a a widget. And we take it out, the council by this language could put that back in.
And Steve, is this the language that's in the current ordinance?
It's in the current ordinance.
Yeah. That's what I thought.
And and uh, yeah, we didn't change. We uh. Uh we made a point uh of saying, look, we want to adopt what's already. In existence and not modify it.
Right.
Because then we'll leave those debates to future discussion on structural things. And this ordinance was adopted only a couple of years ago, a few years ago. So it's not a. This doesn't go back to nineteen thirteen. Uh this is a relatively.
How far back did it go, Steve? Probably the nineteen seventies, maybe?
There might have been one, but I I think there was a major uh revision of it just a few years ago, mayor. I I don't. I'd have to go back and look at it. I don't have a.
Well, certainly, yeah, once it went into past ten years.
Yeah. Yeah, well, there there was changes because there was a lot of gender modification and um.
And that's all it was. Yeah.
Yeah, it had to be done relatively recently.
That was two thousand sixteen.
That's correct. Alright, yeah, so it wasn't, it wasn't nineteen thirteen, it was two thousand sixteen. So about a hundred and three years after the charter, so it's.
Right, and it was only gender modification. It wasn't uh anything else about removing positions. Yeah.
And then uh not to speak for her since she's here, uh councilmember Najolski Eichner. Wanted to include in the words increase and add. In uh in the add in lieu of reinstate.
Right, so I just don't like, I didn't like reinstate um as a sort of um. Is is as in, is it the possibility of inducing introducing ambiguity because what are you reinstating, right? Like reinstate implies that there is some set of things from which the council is choosing that is not. Clear in the charter language as to what that would be. Um so. If we want to keep reinstate, I think what, from what the mayor suggesting. It would be reinstating projects that had previously, that had been proposed in the. Then I guess that's my question. Is it re- it we can the council reinstate projects that have been proposed by anyone at any stage? I just reinstate just feels ambiguous to me and I'm trying to eliminate ambiguities. Add or increase is, you know, you can put a new project in. Um. So.
Well, I think that's, I think that's why reinstate was used because uh again, you're talking about. Uh an elected board of fifteen people. Who can add things uh which quite frankly uh could be politically motivated. I want to add this for my constituency. I want to add this. I want to put a sidewalk on uh on on uh East Avenue. We need a sidewalk there because that's what the constituency has told this individual. I just think it uh when. I I think we, again, I think we really need to take a look at this. If we're going to put in there that the council can add items to the operating budget or add and and the BET must. Uh do it. I think if we're going to put in there that the council can uh reinstate or add things to the operating budget. I think we need to really seriously think about getting rid of the BET. Because they do all the, they do all the legwork. They interview all the departments. They interview the Board of Education. Let's the council do that. Let the council conduct all the meetings of the Board of Education, all the departments. On the operating budget and the and the capital budget. And you don't need the BET. The BET was put in place and to. Uh uh work with the mayor and work with the council to push forward the vision of the mayor based on what. Uh the the mayor of uh he or she thinks. So uh if if we're going to take away those authorities, we don't need the BET. Uh it's 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 clear and simple.
And, you know, and I think that's a a conversation that I, you know, we should have for the for the two years. No question. Um I think that is a very interesting conversation to have. I think for this purpose, I really am just trying to push on. Getting some clarity as to if our existing language, what our existing language says is and says, and if it is different than our current practice. I think we need to decide whether we are codifying our existing language or our existing practice so that there's no confusion.
I I don't disagree.
But let's uh but let's bear in mind, and I think that uh once I speak with Leisha, I guess I'll get, I'll be able to. Uh have more information, but let's bear in mind that we're putting together uh this charter to make it consistent throughout. Uh whereas it was previously or as currently constituted, there are pieces here and there that. If you put them together means, you know, result, you know, could very well have resulted in the practice that we currently have. It's just not clear from one language to the next what what that practice is, but. Yeah, you know, piecing it all together as we're now trying to do with this charter. Uh making it all consistent. Uh it could very well be that our practice today has it. Uh has been consistent with what the charter has mandated when you take it. When you uh take all the pieces and interpret them together, the way that I think Leisha has in the past. Uh to me, I was looking for her email to me a year ago about this very issue about the.
Yeah, I just, I'd love to see that because what I attempted to do, a council member, was. To take all the sections from disparate provisions of the current charter and put them in one place. So. I would have liked to have thought that I would have stumbled upon those items that Alicia was referring to. So. Yeah, I'd love to see that uh email when you when you find it.
Yeah, I'll uh email her and ask her to read uh send if I can't find it.
Alright, wonderful.
And as I said, this process uh not only has it been used. What we're doing now has been used for the ten, almost ten years I've been in office. And the eight years prior to that, when I was working as the police chief and had to go through this process. Um as a department head. So at least for eighteen years, we, well, actually with Alex Knapp as well. Uh so at least for twenty-two years, this is the way we've done it. Again, it has not been consistent with what the language we see now. So I think there's some real uh, we have to really take an in-depth look here. And do some soul searching and see exactly what we wanted, how we want the process to work. What's what's the best way to make the process work?
Let's um, yeah, we should move on that uh uh in the in the in the next few days, I guess, mayor.
Or the next two years.
Or the next two years.
Next years.
Yeah, I mean, you can leave it, you can leave the language as is, but again. It's obviously going to be subject to some interpretation and probably some some dispute or uh and you rely on practice or you rely on uh. The word and maybe Mario Capola will have to uh.
Well, Steve, you're an attorney. You're an attorney. Past practice takes precedent only if there's no clear and unambiguous.
Exactly. That's exactly.
Four corners of the document.
Exactly. So uh it it'll it'll be uh. There was a corporation council in New Haven named Charlie Album. He used to talk about the rule of practical wisdom. Uh 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 that's.
I like that.
Oh, one of my favorites. Um we named a room after him when I was corporation counsel. Uh so. All right, let's try to move through this, but I know it's getting late for everybody. Um and I hope, and this has been a great discussion. I I have to say uh.
It's only ten forty and my air conditioning is broken and my house is hot.
Alright, well, I'm sorry. Um you know, we'll, I will move this very quickly.
No, no, go ahead.
So uh no, again, no changes in the allotments uh provision. Um you know, it's a concept that uh. It's kind of an ancient concept, but we're, we've kept it here and and Henry uh a- again reviewed this. Um. No other changes here. Let's see, Nora has raised an issue. Should this paragraph move down to part ten dash twenty? Uh additional obligations. Nora, why do you think that's the case? Or councilmember Najolski?
So um if you look at, I mean, B, as it begins, additional obligations, I think that, hang on, let me look at that. I see. See ten A, but I think it felt to me like ten A and ten B were actually slightly different. And ten B felt like it belongs maybe more in ten twenty. I don't feel strongly about it. I'm just.
Yeah, I mean restrictions, no obligations. Yeah, A does seem like a restrictions provision. And B seems like an additional obligations provision. I mean, I have no objections. So you know, if everybody feels comfortable with that, that's a substantive change. Uh move. Is that okay with everybody? I know we're not taking any official votes here.
Yeah, a lot of the cl- uh clearing up some of the language and making it say what it should say is, yeah.
Alright, I will do that. Yeah, because again, I want to try to get this out ASAP so that the public has something to see what we've been working on.
Right.
For the public hearing. Alright, so again, mainly some um. Editorial minor edits. Um Norton, and again, there are a number of questions that came up here. Um. These required public hearings. I don't remember having a public hearing on the capital budget. Is this new? I think the answer is no. I think this is in.
Well, we just put the Planning and Zoning Commission. We combined them. They were the Planning Commission and the Zoning Commission until, what, about a year, a year and a half ago? Maybe two. I don't know. Time goes by so quickly, but we did combine them. They were separate. Before they were combined and we put them back together again.
Right. Well. Ten dash twenty-two A is not new. It's in the, it's in the, I mean, it's new to the charter. But it's it's derived from the Code of Ordinances. Um.
I think to Jen's question, I believe that we conducted that public hearing through the Economic and Community Development. Committee of the Common Council, which might be why she was uncertain as to whether it had happened.
Alright. You know, and 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 when the, when the charter says the common council shall hold a hearing. You know, if you have a committee structure at the common council, it's perfectly appropriate that the committee of jurisdiction would be. Conducting the hearing on behalf of the council and the council would vote um uh in plenary session. Uh following a deliberation on items, unless it's determined that you want to have a committee to hold, have the entire council um. Do that. So um. So I marked this. Why else?
So yeah, so Mike, my. My point was just very, was again, was just technical. I, some of this language, I think, is like. The limiting free expression of public. I just don't think this got cleaned up to line up with your public notice, public hearings provisions, and I. I think it'd be great if it could. I think there's just some archaic language here.
And I don't see it in here, but the BET also holds a public hearing on the capital budget.
Yeah.
We do it on the same night that we have, I believe, the same night we have the hearing on the operating budget, right, Jim?
That's exactly right.
And yeah.
But that's not exactly a public. Oh, actually, it is.
Public hearing.
Yeah, and then we vote, then we go on to the operating budget.
Right.
Is that referenced above, though?
Is that? Sorry?
Is that stated above that that the uh Board of Estimate?
I don't see it in there.
Not in the.
Not in this section, but but in their section.
Uh it might be, but you. It might be, but you would think that it would be, whoops, you would think that it would be in the I'm sorry, am I muted? You're not hearing me?
No, we can hear you.
I would think that it would be in this provision, it's not in the ordinance, I guess, is what it's not. So we should probably include the Board of Estimate in here as well. Right?
Yeah, I, I think so, yeah, I, I think we should, I, I, I think, I might, I guess the Planning and Zoning Commission does hold a public hearing because then they come back with their recommendations. And then the recommendations are sent to me. And then I look at them and I add or subtract or change whatever, and I send a message back to them as to what I've done and also to the council.
Okay, I'll fix that, that's, that's kind of a I'll take care of that. All right, pretty good. And then we have administration, again, these are all taken from the current, the current ordinance, the borrowing provisions, I did, I did have I did have bond counsel. Take a look at this, I, I think it made a slight change to it, nothing substantial. And
Yeah. But Steve, what about ten dash twenty-three? Saying that the council has to do an ordinance, they already have done an ordinance. So why?
Well, well, no, because there still may be an ordinance, they're going to have to modify the ordinance that's on the books. And there may be ordinance that they would establish that further elucidates some of the general requirements of the charter. So that's the only, and, and this is also dealing with the implementation and oversight of the program. Because I think that there is an ordinance that addresses it, this just simply makes it clear that they should have an ordinance and they should periodically look at it to make sure it's up to date. It's just a general authority clause.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I think that's pretty much it on the body, let's look, one, one last section here.
Yeah.
Section eleven, then I'll, I'll explain chapters twelve, six, articles eleven or twelve and thirteen as we go through here. Nora did point out that there's nothing about constitutionality in the savings clause, so I took that word out. I'm going to take a look at eleven dash three to see whether there should be a reference to CBAs, I'm usually pretty good at doing that, and I will, I will double check, because this is new language, that whatever we have to do is that has to be consistent with CBAs. It's a given, but I, I like to refer to it in charters because very often you run into charter language that says X, they have a collective bargaining agreement that says Y, and the public doesn't understand why the charter doesn't work, and you have to explain to them that CBAs have authority and precedence over charters and basically trump your local charter. So that's that, and let me, so let's explain the rest of the charter to you. You know, I'm going to do, I'm going to go into the table of contents rather than zoom through over a hundred pages of stuff in those sections, and I'll let the mayor get back to his un-air-conditioned home without the of a public meeting. Very quickly, let's get through here, so, transition, so part two, we split the charter up so that you'll see that the, the part of the charter that most of the public is going to need is about eighty-eight pages long. It's part one. Part two of the charter, then part three will probably be in a combined volume, one is the taxing districts. And what we did was we took all the tax, as you may recall, if you look at your current charter, the charter starts off with about a hundred plus pages about the taxing districts before you get to anything in the body of your document. We did the reverse here, we put the taxing districts not at the end, but after the after we've finished going through the way the general government is supposed to work. And so no substantive changes whatsoever in the section, there are new provisions here that were in the general provisions of the charter, like you'll see twelve dash two are powers of the council on public lighting that deals with the taxing districts, rather than have it in the council section, we put it back into the taxing district section because it's pertinent and, and it makes sense to have all those powers related to the taxing districts consolidated in one, one place. I will fix, we will fix in the final version, the appearance of that section with all the indents and make sure they all work. We have in part three, article thirteen, some historical provisions. I would hope that in the course of the next two years, when you do the charter revision, we couldn't determine whether these needed to remain or not. So we just left them in a historical provision section, I don't think they do any damage to the charter, but they, but they are, they are historical provisions, like maybe could go away, but I've got no definitive answers on them, so we've kind of put them in this one, one place, and I, I would recommend you look at it in two years. Article fourteen should be gone in two years. Fourteen-one are your historical council districts. The charter recognizes Baker versus Carr, which is the redistricting Supreme Court case from, I think, nineteen sixty-two, any lawyers in the room could correct me on that date, and, and you're going to have to update your districts in accordance with reapportionment and redistricting. The other sections all relate to current charter provisions pertaining to finance, controller, purchasing agent, tax collector, public works. Most of these provisions don't need to remain in the charter, they're probably covered by the Municipal Powers Act. And so we've recommended transfer to the Code of Ordinances. And when they're transferred, the Corporation Council will have to issue an opinion indicating that the functions that were set forth are met by the replacement ordinance, once that occurs, or that the functions are otherwise provided for in the Municipal Powers Act. Then, then article fourteen will go by the wayside. So after redistricting and after all of the changes that are made in fourteen through six, lose those sections from the charter, they'll automatically transition out of the charter. That is it, ladies and gentlemen.
Steve, before we close the meeting, I personally want to thank you, I think you've done a remarkable job in making a very convoluted document, understandable, navigable, so that the average citizen, everybody can read it, understand what it says and really understand what their government's all about, so I want to thank you personally for what you've done, I think you've done a remarkable job.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and I have to say, I've said this to people throughout the state, my experience in Norwalk has to be one of the best experiences I had, I've had on charters because there's been enormous cooperation between a mayor and, and the council, and our commission has been an outstanding commission, so I, I can't be happier. I'm also working next door, and if you're reading the newspapers, you'll be seeing, you could see how difficult some of the things are next door and
Oh, I know.
Yeah, we had a, one of these days we'll talk about it, but, but thank you very, very much, I appreciate it. And before we leave though, I want to make sure, are we doing a public hearing on Monday, Mr. President? That is the proposed plan, we have not sent out a communication publicly as of yet, but as we look at item five on the special meeting agenda, we have dates listed here, starting with July tenth, the public hearing and deliberations, July seventeenth, council action, July nineteenth, conferral meeting with the Charter Revision Commission and then the July twenty-sixth, Charter Revision Commission final report, so we want to do everything we, within our within our control to meet these dates, which starts with the Monday, July tenth, public hearing, the time has not been set as of yet, there's other meetings that are scheduled for that will involve council members on Monday, July tenth, so working on that as soon as possible, first thing tomorrow morning. Okay, good, so maybe you, Zuma and I will talk and make sure we get the notice out. And I will at some point during the course of the day tomorrow have a markup of the charter, I mean, the public has seen the document, there's no substantive change since we sent the document to you, but I, I think it would be useful to have the public see the markup that I've made based on discussions and based on what we think the trend is and where things are going to go. I think in terms of transparency, I think that would be very helpful, so we'll, we'll talk tomorrow, then I, then I have to make sure I get the doc ready for publication posting tomorrow.
And thank you, I want to thank Patsy, I want to thank Patsy and the Chair of the Charter Revision Commission and all the members of the Charter Revision Commission, I know they put in a lot of time, a lot of energy, I think they've really done a yeoman's job on making this, like I said, working with you, Steve, and working with the department heads, I know the time that you allocated to this process was phenomenal, and I, I for one appreciate it, and I know all the members of the council do too.
Thank you, Mayor, I, I need to just add one thing, I have reached out to First, Second, Third and Sis districts to ask to be present at one of their meetings in September to just answer any of their questions or concerns about the charter. And so I, I thought that was an important thing for us to do to have them understand that we have not changed any of the sections that are relative to the districts.
I think Carl, Mr. Dickens, you have a comment.
Yes, Your Honor, it's just a, a request that the more people we can get turn out at the public hearings, the better. Since we're kind of limited on media in our town, if any of you have mailing lists or any way you can contact your constituents or get the word out, it would be greatly appreciated and helpful, I think, by doing that.
Thank you, any other comments from any councilperson? I'm not sure we need it, but Ms. Revellus?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And it is ten fifty-six and we are officially adjourned, thank you. Ms. Smith, I'm sorry.
Oops.
Ms. Smith?
No, I'm just saying I agree to adjourn.
Oh, okay, very good, okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you all for your time, I truly appreciate it.
Good night.